Please stand and join me. Pleasant to see you, glad to meet you. United States. The Republic. One nation. God. He will be the world. Liberty and justice. Thank you. Notice of this meeting was given in advance thereof by publishing one time in Key County News and Post in the City Administration building, as shown by the certificate of posted notice. Notice to this meeting was simultaneously given to the President and all members of the council. Availability of the agenda was communicated in advance notice and notice to the President and Council of this meeting. All proceedings hereafter will be taken for this convened meeting is open to the citizens of the public. This meeting is being convened in accordance with the Open Meeting Act. Copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the southeast corner of the council chambers. Any person wishing to address the council and to do so by being recognized, please go to the podium. Please sign the signing sheet located on the podium, state your names, organization, interest, or person you represent before you begin speaking. Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm.
Here.
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 Craskey.
I hear.
Lachlan.
Uh, we will not give Chris his huge absence until later in the meeting because he may be showing up. Okay.
Okay.
Right, uh, under consent agenda, we have the claims, we have minutes for special meeting till August twelfth, twenty twenty-five at four thirty P M. We have a minutes for a regular meeting till August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and we have minutes for special, we have special meeting till August twentieth, twenty twenty-five at three thirty P M.
Move to approve the consenting bill.
But we have a motion by Councilman Block and a second by Councilman D'Pierre to approve the consenting kit. There's no discussion, but the council please vote.
Or yes, one apple.
Motion carried. Uh, we have nothing under public hearing, under public forum, we have Barry and Henry Jollinson watered in due to a blocked main sewer line.
Okay, again, uh, from our point of view, we have submitted the, uh, kind of the documentation of what happened on August first, the night of August first, and going into the early morning of August seventh. Uh, we had a sewer backup that came into our downstairs, uh, lower newly remodeled, uh, walk-in shower. It was totally covered with sewage. We had not done anything at that point in time to contribute to that. And I started to, uh, vacuum everything up to take care of it. Uh, about the twelve o'clock at night, I called the, the water department line for which I got the communications office and talked to Leo. Leo said he would try to contact somebody to come out and see what they could do. Uh, I really didn't feel it was anything that associated with our property, had to be coming from the sewer line, which it was. So, uh, Chris, uh, he gratefully did come out and he contacted the person to come out and jet out lines, uh, two of the three lines that, um, did not take care of the problem. It started to go down and I thought it may just happen to be fine. So I got everything vacuumed up. I probably vacuumed up twenty to thirty, uh, five gallon buckets of water myself, voted it up the stairs and out to the street to, uh, get rid of the sewage. And, uh, the next morning, so I was four o'clock in the morning, I thought, okay, well, it had went down about this much on my, sort of floor of my drain and my walk-in shower. And, uh.
Hi, Andrew.
Go ahead.
Chris emphasized to Barry that he was positive the line that would have been blocked would have been the line to the south and to the east, and those were the two, to the, yeah, south and the east. It was positive, that's the line we were talking about, and those were the only two lines he was going to have shut it out. Well, it turned out it wasn't those two lines.
So. I get up the next morning and go down and I could see there was like a geyser from Yellowstone coming up from my, uh, block and tug drain. Uh, and so I started vacuuming again, you know, just to try to keep up with the flow. And I got to the point where I called that and, uh, uh, this was now about, uh, one and twelve to one o'clock in the afternoon. We could not get a, you know, a plumber thinking maybe this might be a problem on our side. Uh, nobody would answer their phone, but, uh, anyway, uh, Chris answered, uh, Chris, you know, I got ahold of Chris based on his number. He said, I'll talk to John Sower, and they decided to come back out and re-jet the lines. So I'm down there trying to keep up with the flow of water, which was now flowing towards our brand new carpet installed within a few months, uh, in the hallway and across the hallway to the room. And, uh, I hear the truck out in the street and starting to jet the, the lines again, and so I, I got caught up and went out.
Well, once again, I'm an intro, Chris, because Barry had Chris on the speakerphone by this point in time, and I heard Chris say, well, you know, the two lines we jetted were perfectly clear. We think the problem's on your end. And Barry said that I've contacted a plumber, and he said, if that water is continuing to flow, which it was, it's not your problem, it's the city's issue. So when Barry called Chris back, Chris said, well, we'll go ahead and we'll jet the line to the.
North.
And to the north this time.
To the north, yeah, he came up and went to the north.
This time.
The one line he didn't do.
But he said, if that does not clear up anything, it's your issue, you'll have to figure out how to handle it. And so then Barry heard the truck out there.
I went out.
The operator.
Discuss John the operator, um, and he goes, you can't wait and all the stuff that I'm getting out of this line.
The north line.
The north line.
Which had not been checked.
And, uh, this is at two o'clock on Saturday afternoon now, and so we went downstairs. The water was going down perfectly. And so by that time, it had already gotten into our laundry room, we got the hallway perfect, we got the, uh, room carpet across from the bathroom.
The fam, part of the family room carpet, which is adjacent to the line.
So, you know, we obviously had to have somebody come and, uh, you know, vacuum up the sewage, not just walk-in sewage, uh, that had escaped into those, Barry.
Well, and tell them what John the operator told you.
John the operator, so he could, can't believe, I mean, he was astonished that they didn't have him do the third line the night before, which would have solved the problem.
And we would never have had the issue if Chris Bond had given the permission to have jetted out that line from the north. That would have solved the problem, we wouldn't have had the problem the following morning with the carpet being saturated, but due to his negligence, that line was not jetted out because of his instructions, and, and that was the line that was blocked.
So that's what we stand right now, we're asking for some type of, uh, you know, compensation for the charge to clean up, uh, the area, which we can still smell the sewage in our basement after having had new carpet put in and having our basement basically refenced. Uh, you know, I mean, that's kind of a, the, a negative in itself.
Well, I think the city did submit a claim to their, to your insurance company, but they denied it on the basis that it was not the city's fault, but it was a blocked main sewer line. Well, it wasn't our fault either, I mean, we didn't have anything to do with it. But our take on this is, if it had been handled the first time, we wouldn't have had the issue that we had, and we wouldn't be here.
And I would have cleaned up, you know, the minimum a- at that point in time and then, you know, not happy. I would have been fine with the fact that I could have had everything taken care of at two o'clock or three o'clock in the morning on that Saturday morning, uh, versus, uh, you know, later on Saturday afternoon when it continued to flow to the point that I couldn't keep up with it.
And, uh, the, the claims we are asking for are the claims to clean the carpet because we have a man come out. Yet there's no way Barry tried to, you know, vacuum that up and all that shop battery, a five gallon shop back, well, there was no way that water would just totally saturated that carpet. And so we had to call somebody to do it for us.
And all of that, I mean, he had a tool that could tell that there was obviously moisture that had soaked up into the drywall. Uh, but we're not claiming anything for that because we don't know what the future will claim on that side of it. I guess we'll have to deal with that when the time comes. But, yeah, it was, uh.
That we'd be happy with the carpet cleaning bill. And like I said, our take on it is, it might not be the city's fault that that main sewer line was blocked, but it is the city's fault that it was not jetted out the first time, you know, the previous night at two o'clock in the morning. If that had been hap, if that had happened, if Chris had had the operator check all the lines, the were lines, it would have been solved because he would have noticed it, and it would have been unblocked at that point in time, and it wouldn't have carried through to the next morning when it continued to flow.
Did you make the claim on your homeowner's insurance?
We have like twenty-five, about twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, is that what it is, or is it five thousand? And the damages are only a thousand.
Yeah, oh, not me.
No.
No.
I mean, we're not going to pay a five thousand and a dollar deductible for a one thousand dollar claim.
Special, I don't know, for cities.
Yeah. But we couldn't anyway.
Yeah, also, the, the adjuster that I talked to was like, there was no, no discussing anything. He was very, almost diminishing in terms of talking with me. Uh, there was no second, you know, this is, this is how it's going to be. Uh, that's why we're here. It was, it was very upsetting to people. You know, we're, we've lived in this house for forty-three years, forty-four years, never had this problem before. I have, I've talked with other neighbors who have had some concern, who, you know, explained some similar circumstances, that they actually ended up, I guess, uh, you know, having to deal with similar, similar situations. And, uh, but that's why we're here, because we feel that, you know, the eleven hundred dollars and a thousand dollar cleaning fee, very minimal, but it's, it's more than that to us, based on the circumstances.
Well, and it's just on the basis that could have been handled the night before, but per the, you know, per instructions from Chris, that line wasn't checked because he was positive it was coming from the south. And it was not, it was the blockage was in the north line.
Any other details on this?
Um, the reason that the, uh, the reason that Chris believed that the, the line to the north was, was flowing is because he checked the manhole upstream and saw a flutter now, and given that it was two o'clock and then three o'clock in the morning, it's hard to, it's hard, you're not going to see a lot of flow. But it didn't manifest itself until everybody was up and flushing toilets and washing, so.
However, we, yeah, the neighbors, you mean, because we didn't, too, that, we went to a friend's house to use the bathroom in the morning because Barry could see it was starting to come up out of that floor drain again.
Um.
But, you know.
The insurance company denied the request based upon, based upon the fact that we do have a regular maintenance schedule. Uh, uh. Improper use upstream is probably what caused the blockage, that's not the Jolluston's fault, it's not the city's fault, it's just, it, it's just manifested itself. Their line, uh, I think, I think there are people service contractor believe there's, there's, there's a dead-end line that goes up the alley, which was the most likely con of, of a, of a backup. However, the Jolluston's line apparently top intercepts into the street, the north-south street line. So there was, there was, there was an assumption that, that you were draining to the alley line and you drained to the street line. Um, when they checked flow up, upstream on the, they, they saw it was flowing, that's what I'm told is the reason them not jetting. Uh, Mike from People Service, um, and I think he can confirm that report as to the thousand dollars. Um, that would be a council decision, a council decision and one of them want to settle, um, which they want, if a legal nod as, as to precedence.
But, but, but we don't understand is how more difficult would that have been when that truck was out there? I know it was two o'clock in the morning, which was not ideal by any means, but to having check all the lines.
Well, they, they did check.
Well, they did.
But, but to jet that third line, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily understanding why they jetted to the southeast or the south.
Yeah, so we don't know that either. And the manhole that he jetted from was probably basically pretty much in front, it was on the top end of our property, first in the middle was three.
Mike and Bear might have some players, and I'll go ahead and play just. The way that walked up there is.
Okay.
So sorry for your situation first of all, it's extremely unfortunate. Mike and Bear, People Service, the way that we evaluate, since we can't see in the pipes, right? We've hot manholes and we see where water is standing. If water is standing in that manhole, then the blockage is downstream from that manhole, right? So when they try to go north and there's no water in that manhole, then there is no blockage there. So where your line sit, this is, is in an odd place that's kind of in between those two. So he jet all these because he saw water standing in there, which means there's a backup over here, so he went ahead of that to break that loose. It's very possible that there are actually two blockages here instead of just, instead of just one, but we can't see inside the pipes. So we can only evaluate when we see standing water. So we jet the lines that are, have standing water in. So that's why he did not do the north one that night because he didn't see any backup water in that pipe. And then as people got up in the morning, they started using more, more water than whatever was happening around your line, that started backing up when guys got bored, because it did start to go down when he did jet the sound.
Down.
But just, it was fast, but it did start to go down, right? So it's very possible that there were two or three or different, different, um, things happening in that pipe between all three of those. But we can't see in them, so we can only evaluate by seeing what's in the, we can't see in the pipes, we can only evaluate by what's seeing in the manhole. So he did his job by going, okay, there's water here, I'm going to go up here, if there's no water here, I'm not going to jet this because there's no standing water, which means nothing is backing up. So it's very.
Oh, but he was. He was always told.
To get the two line.
The two line. He wasn't, you know, if he would have done that third line, you know, just as a precaution, it would have solved the problem immediately. And we would not have, have backup the next morning.
And this operator told Barry, and I've heard it too, he was, I can't believe why they didn't have me do that third line, that north line, I don't know why they didn't have me do it.
I can't speak to what people said there because I was in there, and it's going by the evidence shown in view, um.
On SOP standard number.
Yeah, uh, the SOP that we have, which is an industry standard, we're not doing anything outside of the ordinary. And then also with the insurers saying what they said that there wasn't, that preventive maintenance, because once again, we can't see in the pipe, we can't see how many blockages. Preventive maintenance cleans up our routine maintenance, we can't control what people put down the drains every day.
Now, I.
But why are we responsible for this backup?
Why are we responsible for having to, if we wouldn't have been and then gone?
Well, uh, no ways for.
What would have been ten, twenty thousand dollars worth of damage in our basement versus what we were able to. I mean, I don't know how many other claims have been made in this regard. I, I can't imagine that there hasn't, this hasn't happened before. And I've talked to some other people, but the fact is, uh, this just isn't, you know, it just doesn't make sense that we should have to be responsible.
It'd be up to them to decide if they want to vote on, on, on that thing, but obviously, everything runs through the insurance company, they reviewed everything, and they found out that the preventive maintenance that they require by industry standards is done, therefore.
But it wasn't. Yeah, but honestly, once it is done, because we do jet that line. But it didn't jet, wasn't jetted enough to prevent the problem.
Preventive maintenance is done on a routine basis, like once a quarter of a, of a year, because we can't control what people put down drains on a daily basis, and we can't jet lines daily. That just doesn't work, so it, it is extremely unfortunate.
I'm not.
Mike, Mike said that.
I want to say, I'm just going to be, I'm going to go away now, you guys got your information from me.
I want to say one more thing. I want to say one more thing, if there's a problem with people putting down their line, things that shouldn't, maybe we should have some, uh, you know, maybe some, something to notify people that this is a problem, and that we need to be doing something about it, not just letting it go so it happens to somebody else. You know, this is, this is Ola Ola, that's probably other.
It is everywhere, it's not, it's, it, within Ola Ola, we've put out several newsletters, wet wipes, even though they say they're washable, they're not washable.
I agree.
Um, we found diapers in sewer lines, we find all manner of things, we have people who dump their grease, I mean, it makes a grease with a wet wipe and a diaper and you're flopped.
Okay.
Even if we just jetted it yesterday. And so it's, it's, you know, I thought, we, we have certain lines where we encourage people to waste water, fill up your bathtub and open the drains and flush toilets all at the same time, just so they can avoid the costly repair on their own service. Because if a service line plugs up, that's, that, that could be anywhere from, uh, uh, five to twenty thousand dollar expense.
That this wasn't a service.
I, I agree. Now, in this particular case, uh, the, the, the insurance company, and, and the city was not at fault, uh, denied the claim, but that's why you're here.
Yes.
They completed the council on, on, for a thousand dollars towards the cost of, of cleanup. Um, uh, my concern, as it always is, they hear, they, they get tired of you saying this, is, you know, is an establishment of precedence on, on assuming responsibility for any backup that, 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 that was not our, that was not our cause, our direct cause.
But once again, I'm just saying, and I know there was no water in that north line, you said, however, like I said, Chris was positive that was coming from the south, and so I think that's where the focus of it was. And, uh, the operator said, I can't believe he didn't have me check this north line. And he also made the comment when he was looking at the damage, because he wanted to go downstairs and see it, he was, I cannot believe this happened.
Yeah, it went down immediately after we walked downstairs, uh, after he jetted out.
That north line.
Yeah. Two o'clock, started there.
So that's why we're here.
Council, you have any comments?
Not really, I mean, the, the intern company weighed in, I mean, it sounds like the intern company is satisfied, you know, of course, they, they have a vested interest in this with the checkbook, that, you know, we, we have maintenance routines, et cetera, these, you know, sewer backups are not unprecedented, you know, they, they happen from time to time, you know, responsibility is always kind of a nebulous thing. Um, you know, there is, of course, things that homeowners can do, i.e. insurance and backhoe or printing devices, that sort of stuff, which, you know, I'm not saying I'm blaming anybody for not having those, but these are all a realm of, of things that we all deal with underground, and we can't put our hands on and, and appreciate the problems on a, a more immediate scale.
Well, we just, uh, even if you deny this claim, we just want you to be aware of what happened.
Well, I think we're very aware. I, 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 I I see the claim, and it could have been a lot.
Oh, it should have been.
It could have been ten thousands of dollars.
I'm worried aware of that.
And, uh, you know, personally, I don't have a problem with precedents. It's, it's on a case-by-case basis for every, every time we deal with this. Uh, you know, and what you said about, you know, maybe, maybe Chris should have jetted another line there or whatever. You know? Who knows, I mean, this, this is, this is difficult.
I'd say that same thing, Steve. Uh, that, I'm not worried about that either, setting that.
Well, you know, and that's what really bothers us, because this is the downstairs bathroom, we don't use it daily. Barry will have fences, you could, we could smell it when you open the back door, you could smell the smell from the sewage in that walk-in shower. We hadn't happened to smell that, we may not have gone down there for a couple of days because we don't use that bathroom daily, sure, and it could have been a relative bathroom.
Or, you know, and the council's role is, is to, you know, listen to ours, insurance, adjusters, you know, listen to our, our city manager and, and counsel on this, but then, you know, again, the council's role is to listen to our constituents too. Uh.
I am.
Go ahead.
I want to say I feel for you, in my previous house I lived in, uh, just real quick, I was on the downhill side of it. Seemed like my two neighbors to the north were always watching random crap, and we had two incidences where it backed up, clearing to our house. And we like to go through that, and it's not fun. Um, I also, with that, I have to be honest, looking at what insurance has said and looking through this, you know, um, we do routine maintenance, we have an employee out there at two o'clock in the morning jetting lines, popping manholes, I think he, he tried, he did his very best, and this was no fault of you. This is no fault of us, this is what we call an emergency outside of all of our control, and that's what homeowner's insurance steps in. I would not be able to be a reason that we're at fault to justify.
And, you know, like you said, we can't afford to go pay five thousand dollars, you know, pay a thousand dollars, you know, so that's why we're here.
I guess my personal thought. What what if we just split the cost fifty-fifty? This, this bill, would you come out to five, ten, ninety-three?
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Well, that would certainly help.
Is our appreciation.
If, if, I'll make a suggestion, I mean, probably direct the council to do a settlement agreement, which would just be a very brief document where everybody acknowledges.
We need to.
Yeah, so.
And I don't know if you want to vote on that, or if you want to just bring it back, you know, for a future council action to approve an agreement or whatever, but.
Yeah. I'm just, I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll prepare a contract, let's just take a look at it, we'll get prepared, and you can, you know, with Kevin directly on that, and he can just put it on the agenda, and we can probably just deal with it as a consent agenda item.
Well, we would appreciate that.
Better for the.
For the purpose of discussion, just though, I mean, this will probably get handed off to Mike, uh, five hundred and ten dollars, is that?
Yeah, it's whatever, it's five thousand.
Yeah. Ninety-three.
Well, the total bills, thousand twenty-one and five.
Yeah, I, I didn't know, I should have split pennies, you know.
We won't be that picky.
Uh, so my, my suggestion, this isn't going to be binding, you're not going to take any action, I guess it'll come be back in here, part of this discussion, you know, for a settlement agreement to consider it, and it would be nice to judge.
So we can get the.
Yeah.
Contract or the paperwork.
Was it that?
So every, you know, if the, if the council chose to approve that, then, you know, the, the matter would be resolved forever and always.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry it happened, uh.
You can borrow system.
Yeah, that, that's why we're.
I've seen this word.
Oh, yeah.
Hey. Very. And nice job at the races too, you got a mean lip there, buddy.
Mister there.
Uh, Mike and Gary, good service scene, how are we all doing this evening? Good. Book the bill.
To give an update on the last month, you all have a copy of a monthly report, I'm just going to hit the highlight items, if that's all right, with everybody.
Perfect.
Um, on the water side, uh, status system failed twice. Uh, the one time that it failed, um. Everything shut down. Uh, we had to go in and program all the set points all over again. They kind of just lost all memory and lost everything. Um, lucky they're, they're able to get that done before, uh, any service was interrupted. Uh, we did have a water main break on some asbestos pipe and that may was a little bit more difficult to repair, but. They were able to make a temporary repair and then get parts to finally make the repair, um, the correct way. Uh, wastewater side, um, we had a, uh. What you want to call, uh, we're having, we're having issues with our ammonia right at the moment. Um, there are several reasons for this. Um, one is for the heavy rain events that, um, come in, they, uh, they wash out the plant and they take all of our food away with it. Um, and the other one is, um, there was, uh, when this happened, there's snails that are in the trickling filters and that's part of the biological action. That's part of what happens at, at, at the plant. Well, they all washed out and went into the clarifiers. So, and, uh. And the erosion basin. So we had to drain them and clean them out and remove all of them and kind of start over. So we're into about a two to three week process right now to, uh, reseed our plant to get the bugs back in it. Um, and that's a slower process because obviously we have to wait for the, for the government to get that done. Uh, the ammonia is going down every single week and we're in constant contact with the, um, state inspector, uh, working with him to come up with, um. Uh, resolutions for this and also to be, so he's informed that we're on compliance on our ammonia during this time. Looking back on your history, you guys are out of compliance on your ammonia about this time every year anyway, due to the, um, heavy, heavy rains and the temperature changes. Because now we need cooler night, hotter in the day, and that affects our wastewater process. Bugs do slow down, they speed up and it becomes kind of an issue at, at every plant. But historically, you guys are out of compliance during this time. And, uh, so we are looking to mitigate that. Um.
Is there some water infiltration abnormal in mine?
Your, to yours. That's a hard question. Uh, it is, um, your, uh, your intrusion and infiltration here is, um. It is bad. I mean, that's the only word that I can use. There is no normal, there is no standard, there is concerns. Um, yes, it's always a concern. Yes. Because it, when we get, you know, three inches of rain or one inch of, of rain in, in, in one hour, that plant overloads. It just pushes water straight through it. And then it doesn't, um, go slow enough that the, uh, that the bacterial, um, can actually happen. It just washes everything out, like washes all the, uh, snails off, of the rocks because of the volume of water coming in. Um, so yes, it is an issue. It's not, I mean, it's a common issue everywhere because of the age of the infrastructure across the entire United States. Um, but we'll have to start looking into how, you know, because we do weekly inspections of certain parts of town anyway. Just because there's level pipes and there's low mains and stuff, so we have a routine maintenance that, that happens every single week. And we can use some of that data too, to try to figure out where this cyanide is coming from. Eventually, um, televising and actually looking in the pipe is what we have to do. We could do some smoke testing too. So we're looking at ways now to be able to find some of that. Uh, but it is, yeah, yeah, it, it does cause, I'm happy to.
Well, only twice infiltration is including manholes and then exterior rains.
Uh, cracks in pipes, um, cracks in pipes because the groundwater, when you get four inches of rain or two inches of rain, or we have a lot of rain over a long period of time. The groundwater table comes up. Okay? And those pipes are in that groundwater. So you get roots rolling in there, you get any cracks in the pipe, you get anything like that, water pours in. And we can kind of tell this a little bit from either if you, you sub pump in a house basement or it's bad time by how long it takes for the water to. Um, get back to normal at, at the plant, right? If it's a burst and it goes away right away, um, that is an indication of the groundwater. If it takes a longer time, that's an indication of sub pumps in people's houses hooked directly to the sewer, because that obviously is draining the water around their houses, right? So that runs long and, right? And yours goes away as soon as it comes in. So, um, you know, there could possibly be some storms that are hooked up somewhere. You know, uh, maps are only, you know, really as good as the maps that we have. And obviously, all these towns are older and some of these maps go away. Um, so, uh, it can be a few different things. Manholes, of course, are one of them. You know, because the water sits on top and it, and it goes through, but that's not the only thing. So, yeah. So we're still struggling with, uh, with that. We're hoping by next week or the, or the, or the week after that. To have our food to micro or, or organism ratio back to normal. But until then, we probably will be struggling with our ammonia.
So would you do some type of diversion or holding or detention on to hold that water?
You can, yes. You guys currently don't have that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and to get out, on the same topic, but now I'm going to give you my own opinion a little bit, um, that doesn't fix the problem. That just gives you somewhere to put it. Because you're, if you do have a, I don't know, and you do have roots coming in and you do have cracked pipes and you, and you do all, all of that, those pipes eventually fail.
True.
Which means they collapse. So we try to get aggressive on trying to find what the problem is, instead of putting a pond over here that'll hold the water for a while so we can resew them. And that's kind of all the exciting news that I found. You guys don't have any questions or?
There are comments?
There are pins and needles down there.
Question? I'm sorry. No? Okay. Thank you all.
In Oglealoo, by me, by bugs, he means microbial, biological activity.
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, bugs are microorganisms.
And by thirty, you know.
No proof for the sales team. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah. The next time, the next time you order escor to go, just.
Ask them where they say you want.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Mike.
Good morning.
You know, just, if someone would have the technical, technical over you, a podcast, something, do a video, baseball treatment. You people would be amazed.
Austin's wanting to go on.
Just saying. Just a poop on poop. Right.
Uh, Victoria. Please join me. Victoria Edward, the library clerk assistant, uh, five-year recognition. Victoria is a valued employee of the library. A great team member that had early stepped up and disappeared, filling in and working four hours to help when we are short and when we have projects, some programs that need all hands on deck. We appreciate her continued work and her efforts to keep the library vibrant and functioning at its level and her stellar readers' advisory. Thank you for being such a great employee and look forward, and we look for many more years to come. Victoria, thank you for your service. There you go.
Very much. Thanks.
All right, we are still, uh, in public room. Is there anyone, uh, that has any reason to address the council that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the report of the city clerk.
Have the minutes of a special meeting August nineteenth at one two AM.
Move to approve Bennett. The special meeting held on August twentieth. Motion by Councilman Holstein, second by Councilman Block. No further discussion. The council please vote.
Three, yes. One abstain, one abstain.
Motion carried. Foundation parking board committee, under administration, we have establishing salary of the manager of the city of Oglealoo. We do this by four minutes. This is pretty much reset in the enforcement contract that we have.
I'll do another review.
This evaluation. Much better than average.
Well, better than average, you know, you don't want, you don't want to be guilty.
Hey, feel bad for looking, get to deal with me all the time, coming in, bugging in. That in itself is worth, uh, maybe to say. So Kevin, uh, thank you for what you do. Much appreciated. I would introduce ordinance fourteen forty-six and move to suspend the rule so that ordinance may be read by title and move for passage at this week's setting.
Uh. The council, a motion, uh, in ordinance fourteen forty-six is being introduced to the council and, uh, move to suspend rules. The council please vote.
Four, yes. One after.
Uh, motion carried. Uh, in ordinance, establishing salary of the city manager of the city of Oglealoo, Nebraska. Move to adopt ordinance fourteen forty-six. Okay. Over motion by councilman Block and second by councilman Holstein to adopt ordinance fourteen thirty-six. There's no further discussion. The council please vote.
Four, yes. One after.
Ordinance fourteen forty-six adopted. Kevin, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Great job, buddy. Got stuff to do. Uh, all right, moving on. Under community development, we have the Oglealoo Key County Chamber of Commerce through this.
Mr. President, this, uh, agreement is in lieu of the, uh, normal, or community manager request. This is, this con, this specifies the expectations of the Chamber of Commerce. It combines along with square agreement, community development request, and add then, uh, the independent state fireworks, uh, taking them out of our. Responsibility and placing our responsibility on the chamber. Uh, this is something we've been working through. It's a precedent that was set with, with K H A a couple of years ago. And we're moving on with that, with the Chamber of Commerce. I believe we have some people in the audience to address that if there's any questions.
Uh, it's been, uh, I shouldn't say difficult, but challenging. Kevin, Block, July working with us and.
With Kevin.
Yeah, Kevin, double this, Kevin. They got Kevin's word. And it seems like everybody, everybody's okay with contracts?
Look your forward.
Always okay. Right. Uh, any, any comments or just? I'm sure.
I like the fact that this is only one year agreement. At the, I'd like to see April or May. Both entities come together to see how it's going so far, see where they're at in the fireworks process. And then possibly start discussions, uh, extend another one year, not make a multi-year contract after that.
Part of, uh, in the agreement is they do give free. Could the four reports just should record in the. Whatever the reports, yeah, four reports, so that is in the contract.
I will move to approve the Oglealoo Key County Chamber of Commerce services agreement. We have a motion by councilman Holstein and second by councilman D. Pierre to approve the, uh, Key County Chamber of Commerce services agreement. No further discussion. The council please vote.
Four, yes. One after.
Motion carried. You're under contract. Oops. Hey, Kevin. All right, uh, moving on to community development. We have Key County Area Development Office seventy, Mary Wilson.
I'm sorry.
I'm old, but I'm close. Those that remember, there is a key word.
Um, Mary Wilson, that's the K H A's provider quarterly report. Uh, what you guys have in your pocket, it's probably about a minute, seven months, and it's been all up speakers, so. I'll be behind and getting the day and I'll probably be able to get it. But you have to appropriate update in front of you, um, including our funding agreement. Um, and I mean, to continue about funding, you should be aware of that. Make sure that the public are aware of what you're supporting and, um, make sure that you're comfortable in what K H A is providing. If you have any questions or concerns about what you hear from me on a quarterly basis, um, or anytime in between, leave you here to see your busy, reach out to yourself or anybody on the board. Or help me feel, do you, all kinds of that stuff. Um, quarterly update, real quick, that's why I say this. Um, the fear in each of it, we're almost done, so they have any assistance placed for recording of this, uh, or I can, uh, certified community. Firement, and so we're working from that with the state of Nebraska. Uh, my goal is to always exceed those twenty-five visits and we're allowed to do that, something that happens naturally in our office. Molly continues her small business support. She received new, like two more businesses received from Nebraska grant and so for total. Uh, supporting small businesses in that branch of the world, which is about three hundred and ninety thousand, um, personal businesses. Received those funds that she's come. So, really excited for her success there. As well as helping a local business here in town to give a thirty-four thousand dollar grant from the FCA, students, soldiers, some of the great, some of the awards grant. So, quite excited to see the business helping out with the support so far. Stay tuned with the thing, for these projects, over. In the evening. Um, Keith Tony, big gift. Uh, for first impressions, we were able to raise close to eighteen thousand dollars for efforts throughout the county, including. I'm excited to put some funds to you, specifically in the wayfinding area in partnership with the county visitor committee. Looking at a banner, this just maybe touch thirty thousand dollars to update the banners, um, overall, which I'm excited for that. Um, almost been nice, but now they're done. Over around the end of September eighteenth through the twentieth, in the Western Trail State District, three in the business, we'll be doing a K H A number of rail projects. Uh, that will be happening over on the west side of the Alx building, uh, so the parking lot, uh, second chapter. And that, that building, that wall that faces the west side. So it's a community, we're, we're also, we're going to be pushing out, um, sign up times for people to sign up and. You can sign up for these thirty minute time slots, so ready to come and see, you have to stay inside the line. Um, yeah, save my number basically, um, so we can have a seat for our people to study. Yeah, really excited for that. So if you are not signed up for our monthly flow desk emails that go out, that Gentry has been doing a fantastic job. Of putting together for our office, please do so. Uh, we share all of our updates every month through that. Um, you can find us to go to our website. There's a screen that pops up and asks if you want to subscribe to our, or you can shoot any emails if you want. Uh, but she'll be posting that on social media also. Um, something else that Gentry has been working on in partnership with the chamber and the visitor committee is a photo contest. We have a summer theme, photo contest, um, to increase traffic, traffic on our social media pages. Um, it's a collection, stashing videos that we can use in partnership with the New York City Chamber of Works, collecting social media. So we're excited to see the comes of that. Um, race day, out of the racetrack, we had a pretty successful day, uh, by eyes. Two thousand people attended, only one on Tuesday. I think everything went very, very well, except for the student class, um, but for Tuesday afternoon, we had a great turnout.
We believe you worked well.
Did you see my foot? No. Very strategic, Kevin. Um, it was very hot, but we survived. I think the league was very pleased and the fact that they're giving back to the community. Shortly thereafter, opening day was really exciting to see. Thank you all for my open pens. So it was a pleasure for that exciting day.
The pacer thing that, uh, that they ran through their chamber, that, that.
Yeah, the what? Say it again.
The pacer I keep, that I, I. They actually come up with twenty-five, three, didn't say that.
I, I don't know if I had to step out when you told.
Oh, that.
Are you guys figuring? You need any touchstone, thank you. So it's not.
And there was people from all over, because it says where they're, where they're from. And there was people from all over, because it says where they're, where they're from, it was really cool.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Um, something, uh, really can be, probably, I could really
Sure.
Oh, thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate that, heavy stuff, um, I stepped out today. Uh, Diamond Springs Trail, that proposal that came up during our board meeting today, Kevin and I have talked about, um, how can we work together with the city to finish paving Diamond Springs Trail, and, and keep the day that that, uh, and it first, we become the new truck route um, on the north side of town, and we need to do that. Um, in my opinion, I, Karen, I've talked to Kevin, um, about that, he finds that news, and truckers, for some reason, are paying attention to this by
When they with them, yeah.
Exactly, and now they're going down Diamond Springs, um, which, also issue. On, so, one, if that's the rest of the bridge continue to take, how do we get back to to, be free for my container on that road? Or, we need to get the signs, Karen talked about, uh, how to tell patients that the data, that information, given, ties up a lot of device path. Enough of the why.
We mentioned that to the director of, that's in, her case, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and not what I told her, but she had already tried to answer this.
Yeah, we talked to, we even talked to Director Kramer, we're on Tuesday, and
That's, uh, kind of big flash in me, and I'll find somewhere out on, before you get in the
I think Karen talked to her, she had that on her list, and she was worried about heating, so, so you raised on that, and we did
It needs to be on, um, the westbound traffic, report this to height, report this at intersection, so they don't turn south.
Well, we, we moved this, um, farther up from the actual truck route, because it's always made mistakes, it's always wrong. But now, they're catching themselves returning down, you know, they, they were going all the way, they were missing it before, now they're catching it going down the wrong
Well, listen, uh, Brad, they literally depend, they're just about middle, but as I said, um, I heard you see.
Yeah.
Have a completely, and other areas
Yeah, they, yeah.
Maybe they're having, even before that.
They, it's easier
Kind of two issues.
As far as the need for concrete, that needs very well intervention, uh, line out of there.
Yeah.
Need for.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, um, so the habitat infrastructure piece, that was something part of, um, governor's discussion, is how do we, how do we make sure, and I, that, this is the, this is the, I thought, make sure you say, they hope, hopefully, to be a part of that, yeah, how do we make sure that, how to come back around to, you know, that it's gonna, of course, if they make sure that we have the data, they're, she knows, so they understand why it's
burden too big.
That would be, it takes time. Yeah, absolutely. Um, inland court, innovation district, um, just an update from Nebraska strategies, um, there is an application in progress. The, uh, I H U D, overall water, water food energy, appearing over all of, this is working on that application, like if I must do in December, before date. Uh, in regards to that, K H A's role, just acting as supporting agents, at this point, supplying them with data, information, while continuing to Lake McConaughey, in regards to eighteen million dollars that were included for roads, uh, we're having some more discussions about that next week, and learn the steps um, in doing those funds to work, in the county, to make sure that we can get completed out by the lake, um, have an advisory meeting, commence a company advisory meeting, then September, twenty-three, thirty, and Monday as well, to talk about, I would probably try to do today.
Mary, are, are, is that eighteen million dollars firm, because the governor is kind of waffling on that, too, too.
So that was why we are having a discussion next week, uh, so the governor, patient comments, uh,
He said, oh, yeah.
But it's, that, he kept right, so, it is, it's got you, it is law, it's not, you know, it's beginning, our community, it's not that much, but the governor is saying one thing, that he goes to topic of law, he considers this thing, what, wait, does his word have, um, state fash? That's the special.
This says the meeting is end of September, but it's actually the third?
No, it's the twenty-third.
Okay, thank you. At what time?
Twenty-thirty. Well, Steve is your guy's liaison for the Star Wars piece, I think I have all city council members on that night, the office, I'll check if it's picture.
Actually, Star Wars group.
We have that in. Has the funding saved
Sure.
Up in the air, so the eighteen million is in the game of her account. Ready to be dispersed at the county. But if the governor is saying, no, you don't get this money. So, taking, county taking precautions to make sure before they spend the money, that there's a way that you can, blah, blah, blah. My dear, so, um, housing development, we closed on two loans this morning, um, and wrote for housing loans, we have three active loans, one of our homes currently, the truck, so, that's fantastic, adding four more homes and helping stuff, the Samberg facility, we're looking to raise those, to the city homes, three some C D bill to deliver some study students, that's fantastic, still behind schedule, um, I'm, it's really a lot after, and Three things happening there, middle school project, a lot of progress happening, I stopped by in the afternoon, writing, if you were there, if you have time to stop or wanted to, or please reach out to me, I'm in today, and, and the main, the middle part, the gym, they completely cleared off the gym, sides of the ceiling, they need to get a special lift. But the gym is completely cleared out, uh, and the old stage area, that I think came off as closer to the social media, the upstairs where those big windows are, they have the chute coming out, they started taking a factor off the wall, and all brick, the walls are solid brick. So, anybody wants to redesign, um, stop having to get to, or reach out, they have, it is pretty exciting to be, um, so progress happening there, they were installing some sprinklers on the north side, where the old building, uh, used to be that they tore down, so we'll have a nice green space there. Uh, so far, they, how about forty-five, but, 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 large, of those, from that building, um, yeah, pretty cool to see.
Kevin, nice, been a few weeks, uh.
No, thank you, nothing.
Think I spent a few times stuck in a lock.
Other things for the purpose busy, um, our budget was, our new budget, due to the four-year first September first, and so we wanted to do our budget today. Uh, we have our standard operations, will be renewed at the end of September, economic development certified community, uh, for Ovaloosa, that expires, uh, September, October, twenty-twenty-six, and so that will be something that our office works to, uh, really, probably starting in spring of twenty-twenty-six. Um, we have submitted two requests for proposals here in the last thirty days, both of them educated by building one of those, that's today, one of them that's popular, that's what's on. Any question?
As usual, it's been a great job.
Thank you, have a great team. We get those, yeah.
Are you going to the chamber, yeah, like, I'm waiting for them? I gotta go after watching, I'm trying to find my daughter.
Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, moving on, and planning and zoning, we have nuisance, nuisance abatement, we declare nuisance for, uh, twenty twenty-five O G A zero-one-three, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-zero-nine-nine, zero-zero, eight oh seven West Third Street, that's resolution twenty-three oh five. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero-one-five, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-one-one, five zero-zero, eight-ten, West Third Street, it's resolution twenty-three oh six. And twenty twenty-five O G A zero-two-zero, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-one, three-two, zero-zero, seven oh three, West Second Street, resolution twenty-two oh seven.
That's better than like seventeen.
Yeah.
And we rounded it in seventh, yeah.
Oh, boy. Uh, I think you said the most better, when my staff, you know, like, Mary said, I have a chance to see him. Um, good evening, appreciate you guys having me and hearing about this, I don't know who I made mad, we gotta fix this, because I can't follow Mary. So, this has
If you bring, if you bring a little baby in hell.
I know, I know, I, I can't follow, I, I can't do that, you know. I did, I did, uh, my daughter, my daughter's joining us this evening as, as a requirement of her senior year, uh, she has to attend a public meeting and write a thousand-word essay on it or something, one page, single page, eight-point font. I'll step, how they use to make us do it, anyway, so, yeah, my daughter, all right, is here with me this evening, she gets to hear me ramble for a little bit, see if this stuff just works, we did test it earlier, Jane and I did make sure this worked. Hey, look at that, of course, our title page there, I won't, uh, won't force you to read that, so, and it's on every page, because the presentation we made, again, as a president, uh, stated, uh, declaring twenty-two-five O G A zero-one-three, twenty twenty-five O G A zero-one-five, twenty twenty-five O G A zero-two-zero. That will take care of, six D. First on the list is twenty twenty-five O G A zero-one-three, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-zero-nine-nine, zero-zero, eight oh seven, West Third Street, this picture is for identification purposes only. Um, the next pictures are identifying nuisances, this property owner did get an extension, um, um, they have done a lot of work, um, as far as cleanup goes, um, however, they still have quite a few items remaining on this property. Any, any of these items that are upright like this can hold water and, uh, breed mosquitoes, and as you all just heard, certainly we're getting an abundance of water this year, from, from the Lord himself, so, uh, these items got these here. Not, they, they do have quite a bit of, uh, old mineral tubs, old lit tubs, that they're using for garden purchases, um, are concerned if the other tubs around, you think, for, for but, but has the communication stopped, has the work stopped? Um, has it been worked on?
Yeah, yeah, no, the work has stopped, uh, thi- this was as an obvious, that King Frank took these photos, um, and they've made some progress from the July meeting until now, um, but not enough to work on the property. This is an old pickup bed. One of their, and then tires, so, I picture, I picture for that property, again, they have, they have been granted an initiative, extension by our office, um, they pushed past that limit, um, time to tell them to shut up.
Uh, second one on the list is twenty twenty-five O G A zero-one-five, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-one-one, five zero-zero, eight-ten, West Third Street, again, disposed for identification purposes only. They just have a stack of tires, um, on the side of the, side of the garage here, that looks like an industry, right there. That's fine, we don't, we're in such street. Um, and then, yes, yeah, you can see the tires, yeah, uh, they did contact me in July about those tires, I informed them that was the only remaining nuisance on that property, and when we did it, I knew the tires were still there, so. Pretty easy fixer, if they just picked up the tires and put them inside that garage, it's probably good. Lastly, to declare this evening is twenty twenty-five O G A zero-two-zero, this is P I D zero-zero-five, zero-one-three-two, zero-zero, seven zero-three, West Second Street, again, this photos for identification purposes only. Uh, this property had a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, this is all that has remained in this property, again, they were granted an extension. Um, made a bunch of progress, and then just left this little bit right next to the ship. Not the trailer was full, or whatever they were using to haul off, I mean, they had unlicensed vehicles, y- you name it, this property had it, tree limbs, um, discarded, uh, personal goods and real property. This is all that's left, right there. Again, very simple, um, but we, we, uh, we're sticking to the Ps and Qs here, we gotta hold everyone's feet to the fire accordingly, those are the three properties to declare this evening, I'll talk really quick. Um, I'll go over some of the numbers real quick, and this would include, this is basic, based on the assumption that we'd be Friday's property this evening, and you, you rescind the property, that it's an agenda item. So, one hundred and thirty fir-, one hundred and thirty-five properties have been reviewed, thirty-three cour- courtesy letter percent, that's roughly twenty-four point tw- four percent of the properties reviewed. Thirteen properties voluntarily cleared after receiving that courtesy letter, that represents thirty-nine point four of the courtesy letters sent, or nine point six three of the properties reviewed. Twenty-one properties were declared a nuisance, again, making the assumption that those three are declared this evening, uh, that represents sixty-three point six percent of courtesy letters sent, or fifteen percent. Fifteen and a half percent of the properties reviewed, that's of the one hundred and thirty-five. Seventeen properties are cleared after receiving a declaration note, again, making the assumption that you clear those five properties this evening, uh, that, that's fifty-one and a half percent of the courtesy letters sent, or twelve point five nine percent of properties reviewed. And filed by the numbers here, uh, so far, we have three properties moved to abate and spend fund, uh, that represents nine per, nine point one percent of the courtesy letters, only two point two five percent of the properties reviewed, so really good. Um, in terms of top, number of properties reviewed, making it all the way to abatement, which is what we don't want to get to, we want them to voluntarily clean it, and that's your goal, that's our goal. So, these numbers, these numbers represent, uh, a really successful nuisance season so far in this, in this section. And I know you guys are in your budget throws, as are all municipalities at this time, and I, Kevin and I talked about the upcoming session for next year, um, so, hopefully that can continue and carry on, we'd like to see this progress, these numbers.
And just to reiterate, Ed and I have talked about the sections that we are looking at next year, on the east side of town, along Highway thirty, going towards, two, eight, three, that's the other So, that is, that is an area that is, is going to be a challenge, it's going to be a challenge for all of us, including West Central, and normally, we don't, and now it's that this quickly, but I think the more we can get ahead of that area, uh, yeah, hopefully people will acknowledge.
Yeah, Kevin and I had actually had a conversation about actually making that, maybe making that known public during the application period, uh, as you guys remember, West Central, a couple of years ago, started, uh, having communities apply to be a part of the nuisance program, uh, which you guys have done successfully around, the last two years. Um, Kevin and I talked about during that application period, maybe making that statement during that time of the area we're going to review to spur some off-season cleanup. Knowing that it will be a big one. Any questions from, on the declaration? Go back through if you'd like, any pictures you want to see? I think we're good, thank you.
I would introduce resolutions twenty-three oh five through twenty-three oh seven, and move further to adopt.
Uh, resolutions of declared nuisance. Is there a second? Three oh five through twenty-seven, this is by, second by councilman, uh, Du Pierre. There's further discussion, council please vote.
Or yes, one after?
Resolutions twenty-three oh five through twenty-three oh seven are adopted. Okay, Ed, now we're moving on to planning and zoning, nuisance abatement, rescind the nuisance on twenty twenty-five O G A zero-zero-seven, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-zero-one-two, zero-zero, four sixteen, West F Street, resolution twenty-two oh eight. Twenty, twenty-five O G A zero-one-nine, zero-zero-five, zero-one-two-seven, zero-zero-seven, eighteen, West Third Street, resolution twenty-three oh nine. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero-two-one, P I D zero-zero-five, zero-one-one, eight zero-zero, eight nineteen, West Second Street, resolution twenty-three-ten. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero-two-nine, P I D zero-zero-five, zero- P I D zero zero five, zero two, zero one, zero zero eight fourteen, West Second Street, resolution twenty-three eleven. Twenty twenty-five O G A zero three one. P I D zero zero five, zero one nine, two zero zero seven twelve, West Second Street, resolution twenty-three twelve. No slideshows for, for recensions, uh, just a simple statement, uh, as of the date of last review that was office nineteenth, the five properties before you for, uh, recension by resolution, um, have all cleared and all their requirements, uh, secured. Any question?
I like to.
Yeah, maybe this is the fun part, this is the good part here, where they get to come off the list. Um, several of the property owners, three out of five, had gotten extensions, were declared. Did just a little bit, little bit longer, cause they were really close, but they had been communicating with us regularly. Um, some weekly basis. Uh, it helps that we send the letter to the landlord and to the tenant as well, cause then the landlord can hold the tenant's feet to the fire as well. Um, and I know of one property in particular, that was very beneficial, and the amount of cleaning that needed to happen, uh, for it to get to this point. So, again, this, this is the good part. Without any other questions, I would like to.
I think just educating people that, you know, hey, that pile of tires or those mineral tubs are nuisance or that. It will bail and chicken wire you out there.
Yeah, and it, and it's something that obviously, uh, you know, we, we were in a bit of transition in our office too. I'm big on education and, uh, you know, just, I, I don't, I don't wanna see it to get to a base, that's not the goal. That's, should be no one's goal. We wanna get it cleared voluntarily, and a lot of times, like I said, Mr. President, it's just. Can you explain to me what is a nuisance in this photo, or, or, you know, a stack of tires? They don't know that it can hold water. That can breed mosquitoes or rodents. Um, just things you guys don't want, we don't want.
A pile of wood is a different kind of stuff.
A pile of wood isn't, yeah. And those are two good definitions that we use regularly. A pile is exactly what it sounds like. It's a pile of wood, not stacked neatly. Stacked neatly would be like your fire, next to your fireplace, like you have your rows of four by four and four high.
And I would just say thank you to the citizens that has gone through and, uh, rectified these issues and improved community image and, uh, helping take these concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we got a, we got a phone call. We don't often get, thank you, phone calls. Surprise, surprise, not Mary Wilson. Um. We're working on that, hashtag we're more than nuisance. Uh, but we did get a phone call the other day from a citizen within, within the area that we're reviewing. Uh, and they were very clear with, with the way that he's looking, so, um, we, we made sure to print that out, and I think we put it on. Gold paper, gold colors, paper and back. We're gonna play in the sun, man. That's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would introduce resolutions twenty-three oh eight through twenty-three twelve, and then further adoption. Resolutions of rescinding third nuisance. But we have a second by Councilman, we have a, uh, extension by, uh, Councilman Block, and second by Councilman Dueter. Full statement.
Full statement, sorry. There's no further discussion, please vote.
Or yes, one after?
Resolutions twenty-three oh eight through twenty-three twelve are given by.
Mr. President, there's something that's, that's, help of the, the year put a lot of thought into. I think it, it has a great deal of merit and addresses, addresses some, addresses our budget needs to a level of detail within the standards across the board into a system. I thought that all, all printed over there.
I think we went over some pretty good detail last Wednesday on this. Um, ultimately, I'll just kinda go just quickly, uh, rebalancing the scales, uh, between residential homeowners pay in Ogallala to commercial accounts and motels. Um, as we know currently, there's only six dollars difference between residential account and commercial account. And, um, I believe that spread would be a little bit greater. And so, we're just, uh, balancing scales, moving a little bit more of the cost to the commercials and motel side of things. In addition, what that does specifically, when you look at hotels and commercials that, um, drive out-of-state dollars into our local economy. Do you have any specific questions on it?
You did a great job, uh, you know, jumping into the, the, the. This is always, uh, a difficult subject during much time, cause we, we aren't where we need to be with reserves on the sewer department. Fortunately, for the water department, we are, we found out tonight, with the need, uh, to fund our state. That's why we have, let's do that, uh, with sewer department, not so much, but, uh, by this amendment, uh, it will, it will not impact, uh, residential property. Or any of the whole.
Yeah, that would last.
The whole, nothing like.
Yeah, so. Just a, just a little bit, but just for those in attendance or watching online, uh, we've estimated that this will increase, uh, sewer revenue by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or twelve percent in year one. But the impact to residential households is only gonna average about seventy-three cents a month. And so, very little impact to residential, um, again, shifts more of the.
Yeah. Even the construction, that'd be too bad.
That's because when the budget is the four percent and then you came in and you did the restructuring, um, when you add it all up, we're very close.
This, this is not, uh, actually, I am funding again, but when we got our, uh, use schedule, then we'll, we'll next. Remember?
Usually, we do that all when we do the budget, but probably on September twenty-third, maybe.
Oh, okay, uh.
Yeah, we can give it after.
Can do there, but I believe that consensus of the council, we're gonna support this initiative. Move forward so we can do a budget clear, so. Councilman Dueter, thank you for your work on. If you will, we can present the detailed words in terms of the agenda passing.
Uh, with that, moving on, Forti City Attorney.
He is a comedy show, State Fair. That's how you guys bring it.
We're pretty funny.
I want to buzz down, young.
We're, we're Forti City man.
You know, Mr. President, we've all spent a long time together this month, so I think I'll just, let's, let's just get right in and, uh, kinda touch back to where we left off on our budget workshop. Uh, I believe a lot I wasn't able to input some of those new numbers that we worked on, uh, budget workshop.
I made all the changes to that, this budget workshop, so.
I know that there is some, some discussions on, you know, where we're at, and so you're looking at page two, that's assuming, that's assuming a half cent, that's the fifty cent mill levy. Um, I think we will work backwards from that if we wanna go in the last, start making significant cuts. We can, we can start there, and every, every sixty thousand dollars is not cliche, well.
Could you pass these around? Uh. So, even with the updated budget deficit, uh, we're looking like we're in the hole about one point one million dollars. I have a little bit of an idea, talking to different people and collecting as much information as possible. It seems inevitable that we're going to have to do, uh, budget cuts. Budget cuts are coming from the top down at federal level and to the state level. It's only appropriate that unfortunately, we're gonna have to do the same thing at the state, or at the city level. Um, what I put together is just some, some estimates on how we could cut. And I'm just gonna run through this, and this is going to be sensitive, unfortunately, we have to have the conversation. In order to come up with one point one million dollars, the way that I see it, is we're going to have to increase the levy twelve percent to thirty-eight cents. This is a tax, ask of two hundred and forty thousand dollars to citizens of Ogallala. And then, we're gonna have to do our share and cut the budget by eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The areas that I'm seeing that we can cut, um, I'm gonna start from the bottom up on your sheet. Street Department, reduce their spending by just two and a half percent. I think they can easily do that, whether that's just a little less linear feat of practice sealing, or a little less spraying of ditches, things of that nature. Um, the library, it looks like they could probably reduce about fifteen thousand dollars as well. Um, they've got a couple of options to do that. One would be reducing the amount of shelving that they wanna purchase, and also taking a look at their janitorial services, as the current expense on that is seventeen and a half thousand. Um, and the Parks Department, reducing their expenses by fifteen thousand. Um, I think this could be easily done if we looked at their water usage. If they reduce their water in time by five minutes a day, I don't think we're going to, uh, kill any grass, and that would save us roughly ten thousand dollars. In addition, they can maybe look at reducing their fertilizer spend, it's currently to spend about forty thousand dollars on fertilizer. Um, this one's gonna hurt, the street department, uh, we've got a couple of areas, uh, slated for new streets, uh, West B Street and A Street over there, um, we need to cut those out completely, that's six hundred and thirty thousand. We really need that half-cent infrastructure sales tax. Um, we, we really just don't have any other options on that, so that needs to be cut out for now. Community development, we've gotta make some pretty significant strikes there. Um, under the cemetery, we remove twenty thousand for the ground penetrating radar. In admin, the R S V P office remodel, six thousand dollars, we remove that. Under admin, we can set the budget by seventy-two hundred dollars by not doing the flag pull, and reducing our mid-winter conference, uh, from six to three, and then also no council laptops. What I've got written down here is phasing out R S V P. That is not a decision at our hands, that's really a decision at the federal level. What I've proposed here is, if this can be done, uh, Wilkins, I'll need some guidance on this. If we look at their entire expense and we average that out over the month, uh, over twelve months, what if we budgeted thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars, and we forfeit the federal grant money that they have? This would be enough money to fund R S V P through December thirty-first of this year, and allow us four months to find a transition out. I've got a few ideas, and would be happy to bring a few people in, so that way we can keep the program as a whole while removing. I don't know if we can do that, but if we could do it this way, it'd save us forty thousand dollars. And then, uh, one of the big cuts that we can do is, uh, in payroll, across the board, with the exception of the police department. Uh, Dustin Bullstein presented something there on the police department. Um, all other departments, we keep retirement at seven percent. And we increase payroll by the, um, suggested pull-up that we've all seen. That would be enough to meet our six hundred and six, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar cut, and we just have time to get a label room as we start to really adjust the numbers. This hurts, there's no way around it. I'm trying to just balance the scale from what we ask our taxpayers, and in future years of uncertainty at the federal and budget level, um, I think it's better to have the difficult questions where we're reducing things but not cutting them out completely, instead of having to talk about actual mass layoffs or big payroll cuts. I don't know if that's a reality. Um, we can only make decisions based on facts and knows, not unknowns. And I know we are at one point one million in the hole.
Um, Dueter, um, three of these, I think we did rest in three decisions, and I think it reflects on your updates. That would be the admin, the admin, R S V P remodel, and community development, we've cut that back to fifteen thousand, I believe.
Twenty.
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 Twenty. The street projects also have revenue offsetting. We, we cut the revenue, or we cut the expense, we cut the revenue.
We cut the community to.
By seventy-two thousand total.
Like I said, I hit crusty before the previous session, so there's gonna be a little bit of adjustment there.
Regarding R S V P, I think, you know, we just feel like we wanna deal with the, what, how, what's up the plan for. I, I, I don't know that it would affect the, the batch on the phase out, but we would just set an end date, which we would, we would move it forward.
I guess all I was trying to do is keep us from honestly dragging R S V P into another year and having the additional costs of, uh.
Their year doesn't match the city's year, so like, their year starts on April first, so like, the first six months goes April through September.
So, we could pay it up on April. Just say we're, we're, we're ending at the year, or at the year end.
And we would.
We're ending the grant cycle at, at.
March thirty would be the end of the two-year cycle, of the three-year grant cycle, where.
So, if we take R S V P into twenty twenty-six, are we gonna have the additional cost of audits in touch?
The, the.
Administrative costs, audit.
Well, the audit that we do is gonna hap-, it's gonna happen in the.
For this year, but it doesn't have to, if we don't carry R S V P, then twenty twenty-six would stay a little bit thinner. And just to clarify.
Are, are you talking the city audit that we do? Yeah, the city audit is a fee that's set and we divided amongst departments, so.
Okay.
If, if it wasn't being paid out of every other department's pool up by then, no.
I think if the council just, the, the, we just, we're just gonna finish out the, the grand year cycle, we could back in, we think we just can move it in.
And just to be clear, um, I had spoken with Joy on this, and she is confident that they will receive this current years of, of fifty, or the grant from the federal. Um, but that only funds her till March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, and she even said she's pretty sure that that third year will not happen, as federal government's trying to remove AmeriCorps. Um. This hurts. The little bit I know about that program, it's a phenomenal program for the retired volunteers in the community. I do not wanna see the program go away, and that's why I wanna see a good exit plan on this, so that way we can try and keep the program intact, um, as it phases out from the federal and the city.
We talked about that earlier today, and there, I mean, now's the time to plan that transition too. Not at, at the eleventh hour. So. You know, that, that makes sense. I, I think we will have some volunteer senior program. It, it may not do all the R S V P, but it'll be something very similar to that. You know, the, the street projects that we have, if we, if we cut the expense, we oughta cut the revenue there somewhere too, don't we? Yeah, cause we're borrowing.
Yeah, we've been borrowing.
All right, was it?
It wasn't.
It wasn't, but it was.
That was on the list.
Changes.
Actually, you two percent of cola, is that to all employees?
That's to all employees. I'll be honest, when I was originally looking at this, um, I was kinda up against the wall, where we're probably gonna have to look at no increase for supervisors. And with moving some things around and, um, I'll, I'll be honest, the conversation went like this. Is it fair that we, um, spend more money out to community development without taking care of our home people first? And so, that was the big push of, you know what, we need to unfortunately cut a lot of spending in community development, and move that money to our people in-house, you know, that, uh, spend a lot of time and effort for this city. So, we need to take care of them first, before we're sending that money out.
Agreed, we got a fantastic employee group, I think.
So, we're able to. So we're able to, by cutting more community development funding, move that to all employees that we get their cost of living increased.
I do have a, a question on that to Kevin and James. Is there something in the employee handbook about merit? There, there, there is a merit pay schedule based upon points scored during your evaluation. And so during about the evaluation process, if, if, if you score a certain amount of points, then you either get a one, two, or three percent. Um.
Two, two and a half or three.
Two and a half or three?
Two, two and a half or three. And it was a resolution approved by the council for how.
Correct. So, Jim, can we omit the merit without? Changing the thirty. Probably not. Can you, you'd have, you'd have to change the, you'd have to change the resolution.
Yeah, they're in the resolution.
I mean, just so it's clean.
Right, wait. Right.
So they're gonna have to, not, I think it's, it's gone.
Yeah, it, it needs to be clean, I mean.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that's what's tough out in November, or throughout the winter. We, I mean, one wouldn't be something that's, you know, that's, you know, for one to two. You know, not where they, where they postponed, but for one to two. So we could do it.
I think, I think we need to pump the brakes a little bit. We're already asking taxpayers to take a twelve percent increase. I think it's only fair that we do our part.
No, I'm not arguing. I, I'm just making sure all our debt center, all those. Cause I, I, cause I told you, I agree with it. With what you're doing.
The, you know, streets are, I mean, that, they. That's, that's pretty much a wash, but totally agree. You get a half cent. Infrastructure, uh, which should have four percent.
Because we can sell out where that goes. Water, wherever we, I'm, you know, that's a big thing.
This is dangerous, but I'm shooting off the hip here. If I remember, the number that I saw the projected half cent. Uh, for infrastructure, it was like seven hundred and something thousand a year. I mean, that's enough money to pay for all these street projects.
We could use state projects every year.
Right. We also gotta realize that if we get rid of this six hundred and thirty thousand dollar street project this next budget year. It's not gonna be six hundred and thirty thousand next go around. It'll be seven hundred, maybe seven hundred and fifty thousand, for the way cost of everything is increased.
If you pass the tax in November, it doesn't start getting collected until January. You can't send it through to really a year and a half out and then it will reduce it. Can we pass the tax? You cannot, you cannot put it on the ballot until, until November, because it has to be twenty four months. So it would have to go on the ballot November five. And then they start collecting the tax, the tax, the, we don't, we won't.
We didn't until May.
Yeah, November twenty five, then, or is it November twenty six?
November twenty six, so.
It, it would be May of twenty seven before we.
Right, so it wouldn't be just. I mean, I would like to put it on the, on the primaries, but that should have twenty four months, it wouldn't. One thing, I did talk to John Fairwick. He said if we need to remove the seventeen thousand dollar zero turn mower, kick that down the road. Uh, he would prefer that as, as to the UTV.
Uh, the ground penetrating radar, I don't think that is.
No, I.
Well, I'm sorry. There you go. Thank you.
We, we actually watched that today.
No, we could pass that, yeah.
So those are, those are two things you can best thirty seven with the.
First thirty thousand to pull out of street by not doing a washout pad. I mean, they, they, they've gone so long without a washout pad, they push it off another year. I, 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 I. Hate the issue of it. It would be a lot safer. It was actually off the road. I, I think I'd be curious, did only thirty thousand dollars, one, to fake the aspect? And then two, how much time, the sources are they pouring in to return that road and that washout? Have they cleaned something out? It probably pays for itself.
I, that's, we don't, we don't, I was thinking, could we talk about it? And we're stuck about the.
That's something I've learned for a long. I think we have more than enough here that we could make this work. And then we have a few other things like that mower we have to, we could reduce to seventeen.
Uh. Generally, I like the direction for this. I like twelve, twelve, twelve percent increase. It's better, better than a, than, you know, a thirty, forty percent. Too. Uh.
Is, is, is this an option for you to bring in? Staff again? You know, get a little closer to the bones.
I, 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 I really don't like where, where we're going with, with, with department heads. I mean, we did calculate that cola, the kind of competency for some of those wage discrepancies. I know it's not, it's not unaccountable. Um, I would rather stick with the current merit system that we have and deal with that in November. If you wanna roll back the retirement to seven percent, we can do that and then did the whole thing in November. So whether, or if you wanna go ahead and bump it back up to, to be, be equal with the police department, I would rather go that route if we're touching, if we're touching. I don't, you know, I don't know why we're doing that. Two different groups.
The nine percent is required by state for the police.
For the police.
Yeah.
It's, well, it's pretty generous. I don't, I don't think. Seven percent is more standard, but as some pointed out, I mean, the, the yards are also trying to catch up to that. Any of your, your free. So that's the reason administrative, we don't think that helps, because, because you, just, because your, your city staff work very closely together. To maintain that harmony of all of it. But, I thought, I, I also agree. Seven percent is probably going to be more of an industry standard number with the exception of public safety. And the reason public safety is different is because they don't, they don't have the option of working in public safety. Five advanced categories, uh, if you, if you put in seven percent, perhaps that's seven percent. That was a lot of years of three percent, four percent with, uh, with proportion by. But did you have the option of bonus and stock? But working for Nebraska is the worst place in the United, almost everyone's workplace in the United States.
I know talking about payroll cut is, um, not fun. And we're not even talking about how to, just, everybody's getting a little bit of something. Let me just, just digress a little bit, and so what my biggest goal here is, is to not exceed thirty eight cents on the revenue. If we punch those numbers in and we work around that, I'm open to what we can do. Um, that's my goal.
Two things we can do, that expense re-. I think our revenue numbers are, are good, could be a more generous, generous with our revenue number, but that runs a risk of the longer you act. That runs a risk of what, what, how, how come you budgeted, how come you always forget money? I'm more comfortable, and often I've already discussed this, I'm more comfortable with forty two cents as the thirty eight cents, and so that was plenty to cut. I have a number that that difference is, is a hundred and ninety thousand, two thirty two.
Between what?
Thirty eight, forty two.
We're already asking citizens for a twelve percent increase, and we know they're going to get hard by the time. We also gotta realize, we're gonna increase it twelve percent, how is that gonna affect the city? If we're gonna ask for a half cent, uh, ballot issue on the next ballot, I think, important. That half cent will generate a lot more revenue. But they'll see the twelve percent now and they're gonna be, they're, they're gonna remember.
So you're saying the revenue is below.
We gotta do something, but if, if, if we raise it twelve percent, they're gonna remember from ballot by next year, they're gonna be, oh, well, they just raised twelve, twelve percent. Why are they asking for a half, half that? If that's twelve percent, it's four cents.
Right.
So, I mean.
I think.
So here.
How does this translate? We have a, you know, where, where's that sheet that shows what, what the value is open bound?
You don't need that.
The one that shows on, it's pretty cheap for the, for how it would be. Not for a hundred thousand.
Right, that, that's what you're doing there.
I don't think we wanna go any lower than thirty eight. And we can actually tap out at fifty cents, so we're well below that. Well, Austin's proposing thirty eight.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, I, I, I.
Yeah, I definitely, I'd rather it lower, maybe lower. I would love to be lower, but I don't know how we can be lower than thirty eight cents, and I've really been a one D higher than that. I've always been kinda one of those wanting to finger up ten percent year over year. Pretty easy to understand with inflation and the rising cost of everything. Um, I mean. There was, uh, I think this was just thrown out as like, hey, what happens if we increase the levy forty seven percent? Then we bring it to fifty cents, and we made no budgetary cuts, we'd still be a hundred and seventeen thousand in the hole. I mean, we cannot raise the levy, to be just. It's.
Oh, I agree.
Just don't worry. I like thirty eight. I think we can make thirty eight work.
You want me to pull the budget back? We must start putting those numbers in and see what happens with that. I, I can't do the payroll stuff, obviously.
Can I also, you can, if, if I'm taking a retirement.
But, I wish, it would take that much time, you know?
How hard would it be to do? You know how you had the hundred thousand evaluation, hundred and fifty, two hundred, five hundred? Um, it was, you had that kind of put up there in the fifty cent levy? Could we keep that at thirty eight? We'd see what that impact is.
From what we have in there, does it really?
He's probably about two and a half full.
Oh, for the health.
Yes, that one, if we change this to forty eight.
That sounds like that's what we're gonna have. Nope. That's point three four.
You know, one of the things we have. What I've got here is, with a twelve percent increase. This is the message we have to make very clear to the citizens of Ogallup. Is we're only asking for two hundred and forty thousand, while we are taking budget cuts of eight hundred and sixty thousand. I mean, we are doing everything we can, but we need some help, and we need that half cent. That's that.
The public needs to understand that these, this, this stuff is getting handed down from the center of the state.
I agree.
While they're doing, and, yeah, the amount of, the amount of money they spend on. One golf game that sits on entire area.
You know, and just expand on that, I agree. Federal tax cuts, state tax cuts, we cannot, they expect us to hold the bag and pass that burden to the taxpayers.
And it's not just the tax, it's the disruption, the disruption of funding that's being held up that caused this cost. But we'll make, we can make, and it's a count that the body, the legislative bodies' decisions will do what they, it will make. I, I just feel a little frustrated, you know? You know, we're, I, I guess I'm a little frustrated, but we've spent all this time, time, key enough, there's plenty of different projects still in and all of a sudden. It just spurs that. And we're out.
So that's gonna miss that.
You got, you got, you got a governor who decided that he doesn't wanna pay the roads. Is our fitness court project now?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, you know, I mean, that's where I'm looking at, the capital expenditure. That's where the big tick items are. That's where you're, that's where you're gonna lose the traffic.
So, uh, we're currently at thirty four perc- uh, thirty four cents change.
Yeah.
So, the average homeowner, if he had a quarter of a million dollar house, three fifty thousand, he'd see a hundred dollar increase. I'm, I'm okay with thirty cents.
Yeah.
The disinfectant system, probably it could fall under the standard order, which would fall into a hundred million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
That's, um, that's, that's.
You know, do they need an electrical upgrade in the?
Fire hall, don't they? I think I can get, well, if they, if they buy the right lights this time, they bought the wrong light last time, if they buy the right, the right lights this time, like you get their three lights, one TV on some of that. Do they need it coming out?
Oh, well, we do have a, we do have a police bureau for this. And I hate to, I hate to bump those out, because then it, it just, it catch up.
Yeah.
On, on that.
I wonder if they have the promotion to another charging? We don't know. One, I'd be, I'd take some beer for that, but it's wide.
The take-home vehicle is really becoming a selling point for officers.
Yeah, a lot of what, a lot, a lot, a lot of what is attracting officers to us is this. Peace has got a great culture over there, they're up there, they're TV, and so even. That's probably a better someone, even if I could, a way to, to see how much more we need. How much more weight you.
Uh. I mean, I think we're there, I'm thinking. With, with some wiggle room.
Yeah, I, I think we should be.
I'll be, I'll be, since I say we set a goal of forty cents for the levy and make sense. Perfect, that's done. Look at that, that's squared.
Here's. I, I remember, like, I always think so bad about. Acting is passing.
I talked about.
I would, I would, I would, I would, I would literally go through line by line by line. And if you had to drop it, five percent, ten percent, fifty five, twenty five bucks, whatever. You gotta squeeze every coin.
I, I, I agree with the, I mean, that's on the water and in front of, I mean, that's something that I go, I'm probably, every valuation. Waterless, fertilizerless, give up. I just go for that, like what a homeless guy, water three times, two, two times a week, put it on the deck.
That's what I.
No, I, I guess, I. I do three and then it's really hot.
I do three and then it's really hard.
But you know what? If it's raining at night, I like it.
I like sleeping by that advantage.
That young man.
I'm good with the phone.
Yeah, I suppose. These, these youngsters have known.
Yeah, you know, Timmy's legal.
That were the dogs, man.
He's dusted.
I think, uh.
You wanna see what we can do with thirty eight? Can I get thirty nine?
Let's try to figure it. Uh, I like forty two.
Where, let's, let's.
We're gonna have throwback being gained.
Which has a better, what's, what's this? What do we? We change, do we have everything locked down or four?
Wow, that's the left accounting that we're going, we're gonna be part of the joint hearing, which I think is really clear we are. So in order for the, if we have our, I mean, we could make a different public hearing, but if we have our budget hearing on September twenty third, if the second county in September. It would have to be published no later than the seventeenth. I would prefer to.
But we can, we can still discuss the budget on the time.
Well, I would rather, yeah, we could. Of course, it can, it can change, that's still the point.
Absolutely.
If we have it like pretty locked down, that I can get it suggested by the twelfth to be in the seventeenth paper, I don't like to believe that so something would happen.
I know, I know.
It's playing, Jane.
Well, you know.
It's playing.
And and that way, if it's not in on the seventeenth, we can still get it.
Well, it'll be in on the seventeenth. Question is, if someone makes a mistake, then he got a problem.
Yeah, because it's maybe on the nineteenth.
I mean, what, what happens if you don't have your budget file up?
But just suspend until you do, by the way.
Yeah.
We've got another people's key.
Well, why do you wanna do it? Well, you, you, you wanna do it, right?
Stop the whole special meeting we have until September thirty of the twenty twenty five, what's the date?
I wouldn't.
You mean to do a special meeting first week of September? Always probably can't do that.
I don't, I don't.
I think we should do one, do a, do a fifty clock meeting uh prior to the.
On the night? On the night, he was.
I like that. Yeah. Should we do five to be safe, five P M? And.
I mean, I'll, I'll. It's like the early swing, they don't work there.
Uh, you know, in Kevin's game, they keep reading, I think, the game. For questioning, you know, the thing, how far in the top. Wait, actually, you three, you guys are shining.
You mean, you don't wanna start to consider like.
No.
We're tired.
You can hold on top. We can't go home and.
All right, thirty eight cents to do.
Uh, before we get people up to journeying, should we make a motion for law enforcement to.
Oh, yes, good, good.
Oh, we said I'd go through board.
Uh, we have a motion, my counsel, U P R. Turn my counsel, last one. Counsel, second my counsel, Holstein, who's the. U P R, Holstein, last one. Uh. Just go through the discussion, please, Joe.
Five years, or four years, one half cent.
Sure, Jerry, uh, now we did motion to adjourn. Do you want to be of another court?
Over.
Keep still.
Uh, I have. Board of Health and Meeting, uh Ogallala Community Hospital and Health Foundation, we have meeting coming up, I think, next week. They're still pursuing funding on the uh E M S board. So. I'm going to hear, uh, counsel, Locke.
The chamber, basically, we've been talking about the contract that we approved tonight. And Kate had, I don't know what I could add other than Taylor Swift and Travis Kelce are engaged.
Travis said at the meeting.
Thank you.
No.
Counselman U P R.
Little update on West Central Nebraska Department District. Um, for West Central Nebraska Joint Housing Authority, I have spoken with uh Kelce. And as of right now, they're funded through October. And they don't know if they're gonna have funding next year.
That's in their section April, man.
I asked her, I said, how, how do you feel about it? I understand there's no answers, but how do you feel? She said, I just not. Never felt this way in her whole career. Um, she has no inclination on if it wants to continue or if it's gonna die. It's uh pretty, nobody knows. Um, other than that, there's still a huge uh housing shortage uh for rentals. It's not just here, it's being everywhere. About it. We'll have a meeting in October, and hopefully we'll have a little more information on funding. Also.
Counselman Holstein. She's been done beautiful. Um, really short meeting to talk about turning, turning the financials of the city for their request. Uh, higher play day is coming up. Forget what day it is. That is eight to make. Yeah. But there's gonna be certain times, um. Other than that, I don't have any else. She's been done beautiful, W R G will be, that's not bad, really. And things are done. Uh, we have a motion. I don't think.
All second.
Yeah, I'm saying my counsel, U P R.
That's close.
Evening. Oh.
No, she's mainly getting there, Kevin.
Four years, one half cent.
Want to carry word, Gern, gentlemen, thank you.
And thank you.
On the radio tomorrow.